The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coder, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Crewson, seventeen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor DeMarco Dixon from Holy Temple Christian Assembly.
Good morning. If you can all bow your heads with me in prayer. Father God, we say thank you for just allowing us to come one more time in your presence. And God, we ask that you bless our government all the way from our president down. God, we ask that you bless our communities right now, God. And we ask that you go through our highways and our byways and you handle our community needs on today, God. And we ask that you bless our all the people that are here in meeting right now, God. And we ask that you bring forth change and accomplishments on this day, God. And we ask that you bless Alderman Louis Reed as he leads this meeting, God. Put in him the good works of what he needs to do for your people, God. And we ask right now that you touch our president, God, and our first lady, God, and our entire first family. We ask that you touch and bless our senators and House of Representatives and our gov- everyone that is in our government right now, God. We ask that you keep your hands upon our police officers and our firefighters and our community workers right now, God. And we ask right now that you bring forth a change in our communities, change in our police departments, change in our schools, and change in our lives on an everyday basis. And all these things we ask in Jesus's name, amen. Amen.
That was a really good prayer. We're gonna have to have Paxton Dixon back again. Introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests? Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'm honored to have today as my special guest Tamara Keefe from Clementine's Naughty and Nice Creamery, which is an ice cream parlor that just opened in the Seventh Ward in the corner of, what is that, Eighteenth and Lafayette. Tamara's here, right there, with samples in the Ray Leisure Room. If you need some ice cream, stop by the Ray Leisure Room. Thank you.
Welcome, Tamara. Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest my cousin/intern who's a student majoring in political science at Greenville College, and he'll be spending some time with us this summer.
Well, welcome to the-
His name is Malvin Hubbard.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have my very special guest Gary Otten from Painters District Number Two, Jeff Hans and Keith Taylor from the Carpenter's Union.
All of them from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Paige Selby with Ameren Ue.
Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest Mike Grady from Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Local 562.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today the former comptroller of the City of St. Louis, Verri Jones, in the resident in Twenty-Sixth Ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today Maureen McDonald from the St. Louis Association of Realtors.
Alderman from the sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lancia with AGC and Gina Hackenworth with Ameren.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap this up.
Wrap who up? There's no one here today. Where's everybody at? Is this a holiday we don't know about? Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. We're gathered here on June 5th, which is National Go Fly a Kite Day, which is something we probably hear a lot when we're answering our constituents. But it was on this day in 1965 that Woolly Bully by Sam the Sham and the Pharaohs hit number two. And reading my research, there was at least nine members of the Board who weren't alive then. I'm scared.
Alderman from the eighteenth, we recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for the approval of the minutes of May 21st, 2015.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain the second, second by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, or report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispensable line items seven through ten, first read in board bill.
Board Bill 83, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen. Alderman Cone, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Green, Alderman Spencer, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Howard, Alderman Murphy, and Alderman Carter, and ordinance establishing a minimum wage in the city, providing certain exemptions and exceptions from the minimum wage, providing for updates to the minimum wage rate in the future, setting forth remedies for violations of the minimum wage rate, requiring employers to notify employees regarding the provisions of this ordinance, acknowledging the right of collective bargaining, and containing a savings provision, a severability provision, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 84, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 825 and 880 through 885 East Taylor, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 85, sponsored by Alderman Green, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3862 Humphrey, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 86, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Shoto, Sarah Pappan, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1470 South Vandeventer, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 88, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2000 Washington, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 89, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3819 Shaw, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 90, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3447 Humphrey, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 91, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for South Broadway, Dakota, Osceola, and Nebraska, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 92, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2924 McNair, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 93, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1925 Senate, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2104 Sidney, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 95, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2739 Arsenal, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 96, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 3169 through 71 Iowa, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 97, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4218 South Thirty-seventh Street, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 98, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Woodland at the northeast corner of Woodland and at the northwest-
Some more order.
And at the northwest corner of Woodland Avenue at both Bercher Boulevard, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Conway and President Reed, and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax pursuant to ordinance 63168, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales taxing to the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One, appropriating eleven million thirty-two thousand and five hundred dollars from said sales tax, from said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes, and providing for the payment of such funds during the period of July the first, 2015 through June the 30th, 2016, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderman Conway and President Reed, and ordinance pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax pursuant to ordinance 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account Two, appropriating eleven million thirty-two thousand and five hundred dollars from the said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes, providing for the payment of such funds during the period of July the first, 2015 through June the 30th, 2016, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 101, sponsored by Alderman Conway and President Reed, and ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty-two million, twenty-two million sixty-five thousand dollars, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes, and further providing that the appropriation is conditional upon the Bi-State Development Agency supplying the Board of Estment and Apportionment and Annual Evaluation Report, further providing that in no event shall the comptroller draw warrants on the treasurer for an amount greater than the amount of proceeds deposited in the Transportation Trust Fund during the period from July the first, 2015, through June the 30th, 2015-
Can we have some more order?
Through June the 30th, 2016, providing for the appropriation to be reduced if certain funds are used for other than public transit purposes, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 102, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on a most western twenty-foot wide alley, also known as Cozen Avenue, in City Block 3728, bounded by Dr. Martin Luther King, Whittier, Evans, and Pendleton. Board Bill 103, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on Hickory Street from Grand Westerly to the center line of Motard from Hickory North to a section of Motard. Board Bill 104, sponsored by Alderman Villa, Alderman Ortman and Alderman Villa, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on an irregular portion of the eastern part of River Bluff Place between Broadway and previous section of River Bluff Place, vacated by ordinance 67234. Board Bill 105, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel in Le Cleve from Grand to Spring. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Housing Committee, Board Bill 88, to the Streets Committee, Board Bills 98, 102, 103, 104, and 105, to the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bills 83, 99, 101, to the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bills 84, 85, 86, 87, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, and 97. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 79, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing a supplemental appropriation amending ordinance 69736, commonly referred to as the City Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year 2014 through 2015, appropriating and setting apart projected excesses, general and special fund revenues, to meet current expenses of the city government for a certain fiscal year in the amount of six million seven hundred thousand dollars, and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 66, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on an irregular portion of Eighteenth Street abutting the northwest corner of City Block 482, and adjacent to 1022, 1024, and 1100 South Eighteenth Street. Board Bill 869, sponsored by Alderman Coder, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a perpetual streetscape easement on Washington Avenue, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 70, sponsored by Alderman Coder, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a perpetual streetscape easement for Laurel Transportation Development, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 71, sponsored by Alderman Coder, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a perpetual streetscape easement for Washington Avenue, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 73, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Stole Street at Prim Street, causing it to be a three-way stop intersection, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 74, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Stole Street at Tesson Street, causing it to be a three-way stop site intersection, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Loafboro at Macklin, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
We're dispensable line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill 11, sponsored by Alderman Crewson, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 302 North Kings Highway. Board Bill 22, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2009 through 22, 2209 through 2217 Olive, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 25, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 2800 Goodfellow, and 58 Goodfellow, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 37, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property from E Multiple Family Dwelling District and H- from E Multiple Family Dwelling District, H Area Commercial District, and J Industrial District to the H Area Commercial District only for properties on North Grand, North Spring, Lyndle, West Pine Mall, North Spring, and Le Cleve, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 42, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 2035 Lucas and 2030 Delmore, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 47, sponsored by Alderman French, and ordinance recommended to change the zoning of property from A Single Family Dwelling District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District for property on Marcus, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Five, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance pertaining to parking within 4500 Wichita Avenue Residential Park District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location restrictions for curb parking, residential parking zones within the 4500 Wichita Avenue Residential Park District, and containing definitions of penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 35, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the western northwest alley in City Block 3765 North, bounded by Fountain, Albert, Enright, and Kings Highway. Board Bill 44, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Alderman Valmer, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to establish, establishing a public works and improvement project for the Columbia and Southwest Bridge reconstruction over the Union Pacific Railroad involving demolition of the Columbia Avenue Bridge and the Southwest Avenue Bridge, appropriating the total estimated cost for planning, engineering, design, and property acquisition of the Columbia and Southwest Bridge reconstruction over the Union Pacific Railroad projects of three million dollars, and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 45, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a public works and improvement project for the Germania Street overlay and pedestrian improvements from Graboyes to Interstate 55, authorizing and directing the city by and through its Board of Public Service to let contracts and provide for the design, construction, materials, and equipment for the Germania Improvement Project, and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 48, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment, and improvement expenses, including the lease purchase agreement involving the Parking Division assets, the debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel City Hall, Keels and City Hall Parking Facilities, Office of the Financial Empowerment, Argyle Parking Facility, Shoto Building and Parking Facility, William Paper Parking Facility, downtown, Central Downtown Parking Facility, Buckingham Parking Facility, Couples Parking Facility, and the Justice Parking Facility, amounting in aggregate to the sum of seventeen million five hundred and thirty thousand and eighty-four dollars, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 50, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Loafboro at Field, causing it to be a three-way stop site at the intersection, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Wabash at Lyndon Wood Place, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please move Board Bill Number Nine to the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills Six, Eight, Ten, Twelve, Twenty-one, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-six, Twenty-seven, Twenty-eight, Twenty-nine, Thirty, Thirty-one, Thirty-two, and Thirty-three.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coder, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman French, twenty-four aye votes, no no votes.
By your voice, stand the motion from Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill Nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4100 through 08 Lyndle Boulevard, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on third reading, finally passage of Board Bill Number Nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the request of the sponsor, I would move to pass Board Bill Number Nine, third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number Nine.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Nine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coder, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman French, twenty-four aye votes, one abstain.
By your voice, stand the motion, Alderman from the twenty-eighth, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number Nine.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment, and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills Six, Eight, Nine, Ten, Twelve, Twenty-one, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-six, Twenty-seven, Twenty-eight, Twenty-nine, Thirty, Thirty-one, Thirty-two, and Thirty-three.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to I move for adoption of our course of resolutions. Council, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the sixth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, first reading resolutions.
Resolution Forty-One, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Enterprise Zone for Conway Spruce Holdings.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on the first reading, resolution number forty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to move for this resolution to be put into HUD's Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth that we assign resolution number forty-one to HUD's Committee, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign resolution number forty-one to HUD's.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Dispensable line item twenty-two, Ms. Lanza's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, June the eighth, Neighborhood Development Meeting at nine AM in the Kennedy Room. Tuesday, June the ninth, Ways and Means Committee Meeting at eight thirty AM in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, June the tenth, Housing Meeting at eight thirty in the Kennedy Room. Also on Wednesday, Rules Meeting at ten thirty AM in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, ten AM in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
We also have a couple other guests with us today, Robert and Angela. Robert and Angela, please stand up. Let's give them round applause. Thanks for coming out today. Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Could the clerk please remove Board Bill Thirty-four from- Could the clerk please remove Board Bill 34 from Neighborhood Development?
Alderman from 22nd, you're saying that you're not going to hear Board Bill 34 on that day, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 7th.
Mr. President, members of the board, this weekend, the Lafayette Square Neighborhood is hosting its spring home and garden tour. Tickets are available in advance at LafayetteSquare.org for the low price of $18, or they are available at the door. Please come support this wonderful event in the beautiful Lafayette Square neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I would like to announce that St. John the Baptist is having their first annual summer festival on the grounds of St. John the Baptist at 4200 Delore. All are welcome, especially alumni.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce a Health and Human Services Committee meeting on June the 11th at 10:00 a.m.
All right, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from 26.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. This Thursday, next Thursday at 9:00 a.m., we'll have a Public Employees Committee meeting. That'll be June 11th, Thursday, 9:00 a.m., Public Employees. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Make note of that. Madam Clerk, Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. So I shall be brief but lengthy. First, I want to remind everybody, although it was announced that we will have our meeting on this coming Wednesday, June 10th, for rules. At 10:30, we'll hear Resolution Number 19, and there will be no public input, it's committee only, okay? Secondly, I wanted to recognize the Urban League of Metropolitan St. Louis. They have just become their own contractor for Head Start. So now they have, they were just awarded a $2.8 million contract for Head Start. We also have at the Martin Luther King Plaza at Grand and Page in the 19th Ward, we now have a Little Caesar's. We don't have to all go to South St. Louis anymore. We love you, but now we can do it by it in North St. Louis, okay? Also, I wanted to recognize and give another bit of thanks to Emerson for all that they have done in the last year, were helping us with all the things that we're trying to improve on in the region, and also Attorney Frankie Freeman. They both were recognized last night at the International World Affairs Council Dinner, and their recognition was definitely warranted. And last, I wanted to remind everybody that June 19th is Salute to Women, and we want you to be there. And so now we have four more actors that have confirmed, and I'm not going to tell you that till next week who they are. I told you about Richard Roundtree last week, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to change that Health and Human Services meeting to 9:00 a.m. on June the 11th.
All right, please make note of that change, 9:00 a.m. on June 11th.
So noted.
Any further? Alderman from the 8th.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Could we let the clerk know that we're not going to have that Ways and Means meeting on Tuesday, so just go ahead and take that off the calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, take Ways and Means on Tuesday off the calendar.
So noted.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for, let me see, excuse of the Alderman from the 3rd, the 4th, and 21st for a necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Board of Aldermen adjourns until Friday, June 12th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 14th, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, stand adjourned.